Ms. Johnson, will you call the row, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Mr. Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Mayor Rainey.
Present. We're called order. Commissioner Lucas, would you lead us in the prayer and pledge, please?
Ma'am, if you'd please stamp, bow your heads. Dear Lord, we just want to thank you for this evening, God. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions for this city. Help us to make good, wise decisions. Continue to bless our city. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Before we do the approval of the agenda, I would like to add 10E for a discussion of ordinance 2022-28 entitled Food Trucks.
Tell me the ordinance again.
2022-28.
If you'll silence your phones, please. Do I hear a motion that we approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve amended agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, will you call the row, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Public hearings, there are none tonight. Citizen comments, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am, we have three. The first one is Ms. Lironda Williams.
If you'll tell us your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Yes. My name is Lironda, oh, my name is Lironda Williams. I stay at 7201 Dice Lampley here in Fairview. I've lived in Fairview since 2007 and officially moved here and bought my house in 2018. I'd like to address my concerns for ordinance 2022-28 that references food trucks. Before I begin, Madam Mayor, I do want to acknowledge our beloved County Commissioner, Ricky Jones, lost his mother today. And I ask that you guys keep him and his family in your prayers. But back to the ordinance. There are three sentences that start this ordinance that I wanted to bring to your attention. First sentence states that food truck industries is a growing and vital economic generator. The second sentence states that they are popular in the city of Fairview. The third sentence states the city of Fairview desires to promote economic development through the encouragement of a vibrant entertainment alternatives, including accommodating and the popularity of the growth of the food truck industry. At the last meeting, you guys referenced two. The first was Whiskey Fire, and you talked about your concerns about health. Well, Whiskey Fire has been here since 2021. And did you know that they've had four unannounced health inspections from the Department of Health in the state of Tennessee? Four unannounced inspections, and all four of them, they scored 100%. And that means they didn't have to come back and do follow-up scores. They scored 100% on four. Jenga Java, by definition, is not a food truck. They are a stationed coffee shop that offers a drive-through, similar to the three that are housed in Franklin and one in Dixon that's been there since 2013. Each of those three establishments are open seven days a week. But Jenga Java has been here since March of 2022. They've had two health inspections, two unannounced health inspections, and they scored 100%. What that means is that they didn't have to come back and reexamine. They scored 100% on a 40-point inspection scale. They're a coffee shop. This ordinance that you are about to discuss and vote on in November wants to restrict their desire to promote economic development. You are restricting them from going from a five-day stationary coffee shop to potential of four days. They employ seven residents here in Williamson County in Fairview.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you so.
But just one last statement, if I mind, if you don't mind. I'll keep it very short. Mr. Collins mentioned that he didn't know anything about Jenga Java, but I wanted to end with this note. Troy and Tamara have been residents here, combined 88 years. Their parents still live here. Troy is a two-term track-and-field star whose name is still posted at Fairview High School.
Ms. Williams, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. Just consider that when you're thinking about supporting this ordinance.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cassandra Gilchrist.
If you'll tell us your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Cassandra Gilchrist, and I live at 7335 McCormick Drive in Fairview. Good evening. I have been a resident of Williamson County the vast majority of my life, and I've been in Fairview almost 20 years. We moved here, actually, I guess, in 2003. And I have a lot invested in this community. I've worked here the entire time I've lived here. I've raised four children here, and I plan to stay here for many years to come. I want to say I'm not opposed to growth or change because I think it's important and it's inevitable, but I do think we have to handle it in a way that will ultimately benefit our city and the citizens who live here. I believe that unique small businesses, especially those that are owned by individuals who give back to this community, are essential to our growth. Businesses that will openly, willingly, and excitedly give back, they're a treasure. I want to tell you a brief little story. My daughter, she's a thespian at Fairview High School, and she was tasked with selling ads for her upcoming school play. Every, every successful ad she sold was a local small business. Goin Postal, Jingo Java, Nash Eye Care, Fairview Dentistry. They purchased ads from her. Trina Stitchery purchased from a friend. We have not been successful in securing ads from any corporate business in Fairview. These businesses give back to our community. They give back to our citizens, and I believe that that is very important. I recently heard of a proposed ordinance that would penalize the small businesses and food trucks like this, and it scares me because I think that these are the things that make our community unique and special. You can go to Walmart anywhere. You can go to Dunkin' Donuts anywhere. There's nothing wrong with those places, but it's the unique small businesses that bring people to a community and make them want to stay. Please don't penalize our small businesses. Welcome them with open arms and make them feel the important part of this community that they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Don Buffalini?
She'll tell us your name and your address, and just a reminder, you have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Don Buffalini. I live at 4010 Brazelton Way. Good evening, Fairview, and Commissioners and Mayors. Fairview's, Fairview's been my home now for 14 months. Very passionate about it. New from New York, as you can tell by my accent. Just want to let you all know that I've jumped and my family have jumped into this town two feet. Being new to the community, I've asked a friend who they recommended for Commissioner, Mayor, and their suggestion to me, I'm not going to name any names, but they had made their suggestions to me for Mayor. I asked, why do you suggest that person for Commissioner? Why that person for Mayor? They said, I don't know. It's just because that's who we know. That's, that's the name we know. That's the signs we see. I feel like this has become more of a popularity contest instead of a democracy, and that's what I'm looking for, is more of a democracy. I'm sure everybody here, the constituents, are looking for that as well. For almost two weeks now, I've been trying to organize a forum for our community. I'm sure people have seen it on Facebook and everything else, not. We want to know more questions, more than what we could just read in the newspaper. We want to know more about Bowie Park. What do you consider? What do you want to do with it? Infrastructure, developments, retail? How do you see Fairview? There are so many more questions that have been posted on Facebook. I can't get into them because I have three minutes. But how about a Q and A from our candidates, our Mayors? I mean, I, I can just keep going on. Yet, like I said, the newspaper is great. It gives us information. I've asked the City Hall to open up the City Hall for a community forum so that we can all witness and hear what the Mayors have to say, what the candidates have to say, what Commissioners have to say. We were all for it. The City Manager said, yeah, it shouldn't be an issue. Sent out an email. Emails came back. Everything came back, and two out of the three mayoral candidates said no. All the Commissioners that are running as candidates had said yes, that they would participate in a forum. Man, I don't know what else to say in the three minutes. This directly involves the city, so I want to know why we can't hold it in the City House of where we pay taxes in City Hall. This directly influences everything that this community has. Why does everyone have to attend? If we have all the Commissioners, because everyone tells me that, yes, the Mayor is just another Commissioner with a glorified title. So if I have four out of the six people that are running, why can we not still have this forum? I have invited several times between Facebook emails, all the candidates. All the candidates had said yes, except for two mayoral candidates. A current mayor, she said she's too busy every day with her job, and she had no time to spare. How is this individual going to allow us to?
I'm so sorry, your three minutes are up, but thank you so much.
And for the food trucks, let them earn.
I'm sorry. Item seven, public announcements, awards and recognitions, Mr. Ross.
Good evening. Just a couple of things I want to go over. Last, or two weeks ago, we had the Arts and Crafts Fair. I want to thank everyone for coming out. It was a huge hit. We had approximately 4,000 people that showed up to Bowie Park for that day. And then the next event that we have is the movie in the park this Saturday. It's going to be at 6:30 PM. It's the last movie in the park of the year. It's Hotel Transylvania. We're going to be having concessions. Concessions will be provided by the Police Department. All funds from the concession stand will go towards Shop With A Cop. And we're proud to announce that we announced that we're having the Christmas Parade this year, which is on December the 10th. It's a traditional Christmas parade, but it's at nighttime. We have posted the parade application online, and if you're unable to go online, please come by City Hall, see me, and we'll be able to help you with that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions from the Board for Mr. Ross?
When is that Christmas Parade starting?
I believe it's going to start at 4:30.
Okay. Thank you.
Item eight, staff comments and monthly reports. Mr. Collins, are you wearing all the hats tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I am, and I'll, I'll be brief on, on this. I have some information additional to that. But our monthly planner report for our types of permits, we had three accessory structure permits, two, or two non-residential permits, three building, or three pool permits, 14 residential new construction permits, renovation permits at two, and commercial sign permits at two. I will highlight just briefly the residential construction at 14. We know we're, we're down. This is our, our slower time of the year, but it is indicative of the level of growth that Fairview has. We typically hear we're growing at this, this rate that is believed to be much higher than when we are. 14 is not insignificant for Fairview, but certainly not compared to our, our neighboring communities and the rate that they grow. We're glad to have the 14. That's a reasonable number for us, and everything else looks suitable. But that's kind of a standard for this time of year, and it's just reflective of where we really are in a growth pattern. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions specific to that. If there are none related to the Planning Department, as you may recall.
Wait a minute, hang on. Are there any questions about the Planning Department report? Okay. You didn't give us.
I'm, I'm, I'm so excited about planning.
You didn't give us time to answer.
I apologize. So with that, you may recall that we've been working, the staff has been working for a little over a year now on our residential and commercial rezoning as a part of the comprehensive plan. A few weeks ago, the city formally adopted the comprehensive plan, which is a giant leap forward for the city. We've done substantially all of the work on the commercial zoning, the rezon, the residential rezoning was a bit more complicated. The staff has gone back. We have redrawn the entire zoning document, all the zoning classifications and zoning documents. It's taken us about 12 months to do. The Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners will get that draft on November 22nd. That will be followed up on December 13, and you'll get a, you'll get a formal schedule emailed out to you with this, but we'll follow up on December 13, which is a Tuesday, with a 12 PM or 12 noon to 7 PM joint work session between the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. The purpose of that is for everyone to come in. It's a come and go. You're not expected to be here for those seven hours. It's a come and go to come in, meet with staff, ask questions that you have specific to any changes in the zoning or what those mean as we go forward. When you receive that document, there are going to be three pages attached to it, and those three pages are going to highlight the substantial changes in the zoning. Obviously, we've rewritten the entire document, but some parts of that are just language cleanup, and some parts of that are substantial changes to the zoning. So when you get that zoning document, I encourage you to read through it, but I would start with the last three pages, understand what the biggest changes are, and then we can become familiar more as we go. Once we get past December 13, we will start the approval, approval phase of that. There won't be any delay. That goes to the Planning Commission on January 10, goes to the BOC not long after that. So the process will be fairly quick from here, but it is a lengthy read. So I'd encourage you to take some time and go over that and follow through with those questions. We look forward to getting that. Are there any questions regarding that item for planning?
Mr. Collins, is that December 13th meeting going to be open to the public?
It, it would be open to the public. Again, it's, it's a come and go. It's not, we don't, we're not going to start at noon and end at 7:00. It's going to be opened up. Obviously, Planning Commission and Board members are going to be invited to come in and bring their questions, but if anyone has any question about it, they can come in and ask those questions. It will be very informal in this room, and it's intended to ask, ask and answer questions.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Finance report?
On your finance report, Mayor, Members of the Commission, I have placed in front of you a staple document that says First Bank at the top left. I've, I've added several documents up there, but you'll see the First Bank document. These are our cash account balances as of today. The most important one of those on this page is our general fund operating balance, which is today is at $3,094,000. The other accounts are infrequently used accounts, and most of them are restricted, but the general fund account is at $3,094,000. That's a little over $1 million ahead of where we were on the same report last year. So our operating account is, is functioning well. Also, on this same page, the fourth line down, you'll see the capital account, that capital account on your budget is the stormwater account. You may recall that the city was allocated just over $2.5 million in federal money through the American Recovery Plan Act, or ARPA, as it's called. The city decided to allocate the majority of those dollars, 97%, of those dollars to stormwater improvements and stormwater management. The balance in that account today is $1,193,000. We received notice today that our remaining funds, $1,362,000, will be remitted to the city within 30 days. Once we get all of those dollars in, we'll move forward with the total capital improvement plan for that. There is a timeline to have those dollars allocated. All of them must be allocated by December 31, 2025. We can spend the dollars after that, but we have to have our plan for those dollars approved by that time. We have a couple of years to adopt a plan. I will submit to you tonight that not only would the plan be submitted far in advance of that, but it will be completed far in advance of that. We're not going to put these dollars in the bank and hold them. We're going to put these dollars in the bank and invest them back in the community. We look forward to getting that work done. That's a huge improvement for us. The second page to this is our reserve fund. You may recall that we put our reserve dollars in the local, local government investment pool managed by the state of Tennessee. Our balance as of today in the reserve fund is $1,258,000. Just above that line item, you'll see an average earning rate of interest at 2.45%, which is about 2.4% greater than it was about one year ago. Obviously, with the changes in the feds and their interest rates, we're seeing some increased return on that. As you also recall, we don't touch any of those dollars. Those reserve dollars are set aside separately for intended future emergency uses as defined by our city ordinance. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on our cash balance. Additionally, as it relates to the financials, you'll see the monthly revenue and expense report. It's a document of about, document of about 30 pages and a binder clip in front of you. The first three pages of that are our revenues so far through the year. The remaining pages are expenditures through the year. Our budget year starts July 1. What you have before you is the August report. So you have August or July and August. That's not enough information to make any substantial changes to our, our budget as we do our amended budget. We will do the amended budget in January, but that's where we are so far, and we're a little ahead on, on revenues. Expenditures are where we thought we would be through this part of the year. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions on our financial condition, either operating revenues and expenditures or the cash position itself.
Are there any questions? Okay. Public Works report?
Yes, Mayor, one item for you. You may recall that two weeks ago, we had a, a storm come through that caused some downed trees, limbs, really in the southern part of the city. It started out at one subdivision just near the rec center, made its way across 100, out Cumberland Drive, and that was really the narrow path that the, the storm took. It was through Doherty Estates, over, across the middle school, down Cumberland. We've worked to do some cleanup work on the city rights of way and what the city does as far as cleanup and chipper service as a normal, as normal scheduled service. In looking at that and meeting with public work staff, we have decided to extend our chipper service this year for one month. You may recall that our normal last month of the year for chipper service is October. We then start leaf pickup in November. We're going to extend the chipper service through the month of November to make sure we don't miss any one for items that we can pick up. The guidelines for what we can pick up from the chipper service are on the city's website. Those guidelines will not change, but the availability of our staff to pick those things up, we'll, we'll extend that through the, the four Tuesdays of the month. We will also pick up leaves at that same time. So we encourage anyone, just because the, the chipper service is working, to put their leaves out as well because we're going to perform both during the month of November. We think we can do that safely and accomplish both goals with the cleanup. So we look forward to extending that for the month, and hopefully that offers some relief to the extent the city can offer relief for what we're able to, to remove.
Any questions?
I have one. Mr. Collins, if people have an abundance of, of trees down, should they take part of it upfront at a time, or how should they handle that?
So here, so in general terms, what we are able to do is pick up a section that's 10 feet by 10 feet and four feet tall, about, about what you could put in a large pickup truck bed. We're just not equipped as a city to do anything bigger than that. We just don't have that equipment, and that was never the intent. That said, if someone has more than that, there are a couple of things to, to be considered. For items that we can chip, what will physically go through the chipper, it has to be four inches in diameter or smaller. We can't pick up a whole tree that's out there. So if someone has that, it's going to have to be four inches or smaller in diameter to put out there. Secondly, they can bring that out. Let's say we go through November and we run that service and we've put, and they've put that out there. They can, when we start the chipper service back up, put the remainder out there if they choose to do so. I would encourage everyone to look at the city's website for what can be done and what the schedule is. There is an ordinance in place that states those items cannot be on the city's right-of-way for pickup longer than two weeks, meaning you can't put the, if you're going to have something picked up, it can't be out there for longer than two weeks before your next scheduled service. So yes, we can pick those up in phases, but it can only be done where we're running the chipper service, and that's well defined on the city's website as far as what can be put out there and for how long.
Any other questions? Okay. City Manager report?
Yes, Mayor, one last item I have for you tonight. I have before you a document that's, really, it's just a Google map document. That, you'll see on that, there is a, a white line on, on that that's highlighted. That is Northwest Highway. If you look at the bottom part of the page, the first little dot that you see on Northwest Highway, that's at Donald Wilson Drive on Northwest, is your, in Poston Place. That line then carries you out north or north, northwest on Highway 90, or Northwest Highway until you go toward Highway 96. That area is under some development now. There are subdivisions that have either been approved or in the process of being approved on that route. One of the needs that exists on that route is the extension of a gas main. Piedmont Gas has reached out to the city and their contractor regarding the installation of a high-pressure gas main to run along Northwest Highway in this specific corridor. There is a, an existing gas main some distance away, but this specific location, they are interested in extending a high-pressure gas line or gas main along this corridor. The difficulty we have with this is that their proposal is a request that they be allowed to install this gas main for the length that you see, approximately six feet into the drive lane, or it would be effectively in the middle of the drive lane if you're driving from Poston Place to Northwest Highway. Typically, on, on most of your roads or road crosswits, you're going to have rights of way wide enough on either side of the road to accommodate utilities. Northwest Highway, when it was annexed, was also not widened. Now, I remind you that Northwest Highway was a county road that was annexed when the original larger development on Northwest Highway, I believe it was called Branlin Farms at the time, the city annexed Northwest Highway, the footprint of Northwest Highway, so that the Branlin Farms property could be contiguous or be able to be annexed into the city. But it was obviously never widened. It was never intended to be widened. So with that, we first received a proposal for a road cut. Typically, a road cut is across the road. So someone's going to bore under a road, or you see where they're going to connect a water line and then repair, repair the item. In this case, they're asking for this high-pressure line to be under the drive lane for this approximate distance of 3198 feet, if you see the bottom of this, this calculation here. Again, that's not exact, but it's fairly close. There's no action for the Board to take if the Board were to decide that this is not what we want to do and have this gas main run under, under this roadway. The staff's suggestion and encouragement is that you absolutely do not approve an easement for this. We believe that there's, there's nothing good for the city in this, and if we, if we give them an easement, that easement's forever. So in any time we do any work on our road, if there are any improvements to the road or any other thing, then in effect, Piedmont Gas is going to have a say in what we can do with our road. So if the Board was to choose to take no action on this, then Piedmont Gas simply would not be granted access, and they're going to have to obtain right-of-way in some other form to extend this road or to extend this line. The only way that they could get permission to do this is if the Board voted by resolution to authorize me to engage into an easement agreement with Piedmont Gas. I'm encouraging that you not do that, but the request has been made. So with that, if you take no action, then no easement will be granted. The only necessary action would be if you do prefer to grant the easement and vote to do that. But the staff's recommendation is that we do not include this in the city's right-of-way and have them purchase their own easement or right-of-way outside of the current footprint. So I'd be glad to answer any questions on that. Again, there's no action to take unless you choose to grant the easement.
Are there any questions? Okay. I believe there aren't any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Then, New Business, a Discussion on Parliamentary Procedure. Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor. Members of the commission, there's no action for you to take on this tonight, but for informational purposes, you may recall that for some time, we've been working on a set of documents or a scope that would be a smaller, more applicable version of operating rules for the Board of Commissioners that's not so cumbersome as the standard Roberts Rules of Order. It's common for municipalities, school boards, other similar agencies to adopt their own procedural rules. The document that you have in front of you is not suggested to be approved, and it's not suggested to be exactly what we go by. What this is suggested to be is simply a format for what you would see. Rather than have the full book, we would have something similar to this. We'll have a couple of versions of that. So when you see this, we're just going to ask that you read over it, review it, make sure that it makes sense, see if there's anything in there. We would like to reduce this down to about three pages. Some of the language can be changed, but how the board conducts its business is really not as complicated as what a full version of Roberts Rules can be. Really, it's an agreement amongst the board for decorum for how your business meeting is going to be conducted. So when you see a version that comes out, just know this is similar to what it's going to be, but we want to have everyone familiar with this format when we send that out. So again, informational, I would encourage you to look over this. This is not what you will get. It's not intended to be what you'll get, but it is a standard format for what you'll have and what you see. And I'd be glad to answer any questions or preferences that you'd like to have included in that, either tonight, or you can email those to me, and we'll include those in any formal document.
Are there any questions tonight?
After we review this, is it something we will vote on at some time?
That is correct.
Okay.
So once we get this approved, once we go through and you get your actual document, and it's not only the format, but the text of it, once it's right, then yes, the Board of Commissioners will vote on this, and that will be their approved set of engagement regulations amongst the board.
Any other questions or comments? Item B, Discussion of Recreational Improvements to Veterans Park.
Yes, Mayor. Some of you may recall that there has been a request or suggestion regarding the donation of a basketball goal, I believe it's depicted on the screen you have before you. And the request has been that this be installed in some form at Veterans Park. This came to me as part of the receipt of the donation. Could we approve the receipt of the donation? And then there's a request to install improvements such as a hard surface, a playing surface, I assume concrete, asphalt, or some other version of that, so that this could be a usable item. Again, the city hasn't received it. It's been suggested to be donated to the city. With that, there would have to be a couple of things that take place. If the board were, if we were to accept it, and I can accept the donation of the item, that's the easy part. The installation of it on the park footprint and the installation of the playing surface and anything that would accommodate that would require an approval of the board likely, because you're going to have to approve that facility at the park. And if there are costs, and I assume that there will be if we install this and install the playing surface and all that comes with that. I apologize, I don't know what that cost is, but the purpose of this is to hear some impact. And there may be a presentation from someone with the American Legion to discuss this with you tonight. But for my purpose, I'm just trying to get some guidance from the board regarding their perception or intent for if they want to move forward with this, and then determine from there what my next step should be. So with that, I would open it up to the board, or if there are anyone here to present on behalf of the donator or donor.
Is there anyone here to present? If you'll tell us your...
David Dodero, 7551 Cherokee Hills Road. I am the post commander of the American Legion Post 248 here in Fairview. This basketball goal that you see here tonight is approximately retail value of over $8,000 if brand new. I can take you and show it to you, and it still looks brand new. They kept it in the garage during the winter months. The benefactor asked if the Legion Post could use it or wanted to use it. We immediately thought of making a small improvement to Veterans Park out there off on Highway 96. On top of the basketball goal being donated from Mr. Enzor through the American Legion Post, he's willing to make a $2,500 donation for a small playing surface, maybe 20 by 20, 25 by 25, and the American Legion will also match that monetary donation for hard surface of $2,500. The American Legion approved up to $2,500 donation for the hard playing surface. Doesn't have to be permanent, but we thought it'd be something to kind of kickstart some improvement out there. You know, maybe not all the kids want to fish. Maybe they want to shoot some hoops. Do you have any questions? Get with it.
Are there any questions from the board? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone.
Discussion, Mayor?
Yes.
Like the idea. Anytime that we can improve any of our parks, certainly like the idea. And if we can incorporate it somehow, if we do decide to pave the parking lot, maybe we can have it set up, that improved area, that it could be part of the future parking lot. I don't know how we could do that, but I really, really like the idea, especially if it's going to be funded, the majority.
Could we, could you come back to the board with cost and ideas from the engineering department and the planning department and cost of installation?
I can, Mayor. Obviously, we need to get the specifications on this item, not only the item itself, but any ownership brochures, installation, anything that comes with that to make sure that can be done safely, see what that is. We would then go out and try and locate a spot that would be suitable size-wise. There may be some stormwater management requirements for things that go in. Obviously, this is going to be impervious surface. Most of the site out there is pervious, so we're going to figure out how that works on the site. We'll be glad to try and get that information to you and compile a report back, along with some associated cost estimates.
Would that be doable by the next meeting?
Likely not.
Okay.
It just depends, you know, we're so limited when we attempt to get these bids and cost that it depends on what we get that back. Along with that, we are under, the planning department and engineering department right now are specifically under a pretty intense deadline for all the planning and zoning improvements that we discussed earlier tonight. So this will certainly be on the list. There won't be a lengthy delay in it, but really it will be after December 13, just honestly. We can accept ownership of it. Worst case, if it doesn't work, we can donate it back. At least that gives us a place to store it, learn the installation requirements of it. But as far as being able to have you an estimate back by November 13, I know that we would not be able to do that.
Perfect. So do we need to make a motion that you accept the donation, or can we just direct you to do that?
You do not. I would, I think accepting the equipment itself, if they prefer to donate it, is easy. I think accepting any cash donations should be delayed until such time as we have a formal plan for what that's going to cost and see what that looks like. I wouldn't, I'd be hesitant to accept, in this case, up to $5,000 if the city's looking at a substantial outlay over that that we're going to have to find some budget source for. So the unit itself, I can see accepting the dollars I would suggest that we hold off on until such time as we can identify the full budget.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Mayor, I just asked a question. Should we task the Parks and Landscape Board with trying to figure out some of these details, visiting the site, kind of giving back some feedback, a group of citizens that kind of tell us what they think?
Totally the privilege of the board.
Great idea.
Do we need to contact the chairman of the parks and landscaping and turn that task over to them officially?
I think if you were going to do that, it would be a resolution to do that thing, to turn this project over. From a site location standpoint, not necessarily a budgetary standpoint, obviously, the staff will take care of that. But if you want to do that, I would offer, I would suggest you offer a resolution to do that.
I would just see it more as an agenda item or topic of discussion. Give us feedback, kind of see how they think and feel. And maybe our commissioner who's on the Parks and Landscape could put it on the agenda just for discussion, not necessarily take on the whole task, but give us feedback of how, if they feel it, and then we can come back with feedback from our Parks and Landscape Board, budgeting, things like that.
I'll do that.
We're good? Discussion on building permit fee changes?
Yes, Mayor. Members of the commission, I have before you a legal-sized document. It's not a legal document, it's just a legal-sized document. You will see there a series of numbers. This is the actual set of revised fees for building permits. You may recall that several months ago, we had a couple of discussions regarding funding, a funding source for operations in the parks and the park system. Our current building permit fee structure is designed in such a way that 50% of those dollars go to the general fund operating account, and 50% of those dollars go to the facilities fund. The operating account is what it is. We pay police, fire, pay utilities, things of that nature out of the operating account. The facilities account is used for capital improvements due to related, growth-related expenditures. Again, those are 50% each. This document in front of you reflects a change to our building permit, our building permit fee and structure. With that, the structure going forward, if these fees are approved, and they'll be on your agenda for first reading on November 3, we would change our financial pattern for our building permits such that 40% of our building permits would go toward general fund operations. 40% would go to the facilities fund for related capital improvements, and 20% would be allocated by resolution to the parks for the operation, operational expenses of the parks. These fees do represent an increase over the existing fee structure. We believe that, given the current growth model that we have, that the city would experience revenues to the park operational fund by about $80,000 a year. There would be no negative impact to the operations budget from the city or the facilities fund budget, simply because these represent an increase. So the dollar amounts, even though the percentages have been reduced from 50 and 50 to 40 and 40, the dollar amounts would remain the same for general fund and facilities. The remaining 20% or the 20% increase, in this instance, would go to the park operations. So this is for your review. You will be receiving an email that includes the current fee structure with this proposed fee structure. The next time you see it will be in an ordinance form for a first reading. That will be on November 3.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
So it's all about you tonight, isn't it?
Seems to be. Two other items for you tonight on the, we talked about landscape design for some time as it relates to the tree ordinance. We talked a little bit about the revised residential code, the zoning code, all such as that. To let you know in advance of some of the things that are coming on that ordinance, you may recall, we've had a couple of discussions. One was the tree ordinance itself applying only to commercial as it has been applied previously, not to residential. There is a change in that that you will see, such that the tree ordinance will apply to residential development and commercial development. The residential development is going to include two components, and this will make sense when you read these documents, and I'll encourage you, we'll direct you there. The first is going to be retention of trees of certain size and age. So rather than seeing a mass grading of a residential development, there will be requirements for trees of certain size or trees that are designated as historical based on age or other markers that are in the subdivision or in the zoning regulations, that those would have to remain. The second part of that is going to be the requirement that a certain amount of landscaping take place on each individual residential lot. We've talked in the past, not only about street trees, but landscaping, landscape buffers, flower beds, trees, that sort of thing. So what you'll see in that document is someone's going to come in, they're going to develop a subdivision, there are going to be 10, 20, a thousand houses, whatever the case is, and they're going to remove certain trees from that site. It's inevitable that you're going to do some clearing. The ordinance is going to require that a certain caliber inch number of trees be planted on each individual residential lot, so that you'll see a treed subdivision, not just street trees, but you'll see planted trees on each residential lot as you drive through the subdivision. Rather than being just a blank clearing, those trees will be required on each lot, and there'll be a certain caliber inch requirement for each lot, in addition to a certain number of plantings, shrubs, and types in flower beds and in maintained areas or curtilage around the homes themselves. All of those will be required to be installed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So developer comes in, they get the building permit, they're going to do the same, because typically developers produce the infrastructure, roads, stormwater, that sort of thing. They sell the lots. The residential requirements for the landscape will be at the CO level. So when those come in, before they can get a certificate of occupancy, we will go out, do the inspections, and we will inspect landscaping just like we inspect electrical. So all of that will be a part of that before they can get approval for that. So that's item number one. Again, no action for you to take, just acknowledge that that's there. That's been talked about for several months. That is a major step forward for the city as we look at those codes. It will also be specific to each zoning classification. So what is required for an RS40 or a 40,000 square foot lot may be different than it's required for an RS20 or a 20,000 square foot lot, meaning if we've cleared a 40,000 square foot lot, one could argue that you removed more trees from a 40,000 square foot lot than you did a 20,000 square foot lot. So not only will we require those plantings, but they will work in accordance to the lot size and type of use for that lot or subdivision. So just some information for you to know that that's coming. The second will require just decision from you at some point, not suggesting that we do it tonight, but you may recall that as part of the tree and landscaping plan that we've had in the past, in the tree ordinance, that specifies the use of an arborist. The, we've had some discussions internally about that, and this will be separate requirement that you'll need to discuss. But the discussions we've had internally to properly employ the new landscaping ordinance and the new tree ordinance would be to change the language from an arborist to a forester. The reason being is a forester is a little more technical in the overall impact of plantings, trees, life cycles, all such as that, than you would have on an arborist that may be a little smaller scale. So when we move forward with that, you're going to see a request in a separate resolution that we change the language currently from arborist to forester. We believe that that's going to give us a plan that has more longevity than we would simply with an arborist. We also have the ability for the forester position to, or that designation of a person, to help us with the forest management plan that we've talked about in our parks for some time. So there's dual reason to change that title and that language. We think we get more out of the forester title. The qualification is a little more, and it allows us to apply that expertise to all of our parks and landscaping, particularly if we're going to use our tree bank fund, because we know it's going to grow substantially in the next 90 to 120 days. I think that helps us better employ those dollars as we should as a part of reinvestment in the community with those. So again, you will see that. That will be a specific request, but we do believe that offers a greater value to the city and a greater preservation of our landscaping and trees. So I'd be glad to answer any questions on that as well, if there are any.
Okay. Does a forester fall in line with the guidelines for Tree City where it's mentioned that we should have an arborist?
I'm not, I'm not sure about what's required there, but I can tell you that we can supplant the forester in the position for that. The Tree City designation is not so specific to an arborist. It is someone credentialed to manage your trees in your city, and you can work through that designation, so that would qualify us.
Any other discussion or comments? Thank you, sir.
Yes, that's all.
Mayor, I just think on that same line on the tree ordinance, we just need to look at that and make sure we've got some clear language about enforcement.
We do.
For the tree language. And at putting, making that part of the zoning ordinance, I think is better because it was part of the municipal code.
That's exactly right.
Right.
Item E, Discussion of the Food Truck Ordinance, Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor and Board, if...
Madam Mayor and Board, if everyone agrees, I would like to ask any of the owners who are present tonight to better understand their situation, to be able to speak. In the future, when we vote, there'll be a public hearing, and that will give the opportunity for our community to speak, but I think it will help us better understand each situation if we could hear from the owners.
Is it the desire of the board to allow that?
Second.
I think we can just have a, do we need a motion for that, or?
Mayor, I think you could open that up if there's no expressed opposition.
If there's no expressed opposition, then we will do that. Does anyone have any opposition? Okay. Are the owners here?
Good evening.
Hello.
My name's Troy Sands. Me and my wife, Tamara, own Jingo Java. Where do I start?
Vice Mayor, what would you like to hear?
Specifically?
Okay, so after reading over the ordinance.
Right.
Just in your own words, let us know how it hurts your business or helps your business.
Okay. Well, first of all, when we, we've lived here, do I need to give my address and all that stuff? Okay. We've lived in Fairview for all of our life. I went to school with these guys. When I went to school with my son. Obviously, we've lived here for a long time. But when we did, when we decided to open up a coffee shop, we followed the ordinance, since Fairview City does not have an ordinance currently, we followed the ordinance of Franklin and Brentwood's ordinance for food trucks. And specifically, since there's not a designation, drive-through coffee shops or stationary donut shops, which there are multiples in Franklin and Brentwood or Cool Springs area. Anyway, so we followed those ordinance, assuming that when it became an option, that Fairview would adopt those ordinance being in the same county, and it's obviously working for them. So if you look at this ordinance, it's a little different, but most of the boxes we check off because we were specific on following ordinances and following everything that we were supposed to do. So that's how we set up the business to start with. We have followed all the other guidelines. I think somebody mentioned about the health inspections that we got 100 on both times, the unannounced inspections, those kind of things. So we follow all of those, including the guidelines for business and all this stuff. It will, we are, we chose to be open six days a week, so we are open. We're closed on Sundays, but we, as a coffee shop, people want their coffee in the morning. They may not want their pizza every day, or they may not want their catfish every day, and I'm not picking on other trucks, I'm just saying that as a coffee shop, you don't want to bounce around. And so we specifically designed it in the fact of, or in the, the operation of a drive-through coffee shop that people can count on. We are on Google Maps, we are on Apple Maps, and so it is a location, a destination, if you will. We see people, people that come through on a regular basis, that we have little punch cards that we give out that allow people to get discounts after they come multiple times. And we give them out to people, and I ask, are you local, if they don't have one? And we see so many people that have come off the interstate, that are traveling and just looked up coffee shops and come through. And I know that they're spending money here in the town, like filling up fuel, or asking as where's a good place to eat. And so we are almost like a destination for outsiders too, that are traveling through this town, and we recommend, obviously, local business in town too, if they ask certain things. Then we also, somebody mentioned as well, we also employ several employees from the town of Fairview. And so we give back. We give back to the community, we're sponsors of lots of sports. I graduated, my wife as well, from Fairview High School, so we give back to the sports, to the theater department, like Cassie was mentioning. We donate and give, we scholarship students so they could go to church camp at several different churches throughout the year. So not just to say a food truck that comes in and sells a little bit for a day or two a week or whatever and bounces. We are specific to a community, and this is our community, and we give back multiple things. And so it would hurt us to be closed. First of all, people wouldn't be able to get their coffee. The other thing that, that we see with Fairview is we approach this with an open hand. In other words, we want to give as much as we can, and we see on a constant basis people coming through and buying coffee for the person behind them, paying it forward by paying it backwards, if you will. So the, the generosity in this town is amazing and contagious, and I've talked to other business owners that have seen the same kind of cycle, with people being generous and donating and buying other things. And so I think it's more of a culture. It's a, it's the city that we grew up in, and so we want, our ultimate goal would be to have a permanent location, would be to have a brick and mortar, but to cut the hours that we can actually operate is going to prolong that, first of all, because it's going to take longer to get there. And so I propose that you look at Franklin's ordinance and the drive-through coffee shop and the seven days a week if we wanted to, let that be a standard. If somebody's doing something in your town that is a hindrance and you've got to control it, that's one thing, but if you've got somebody in your town, and I'm not saying we're doing everything perfect, but if we are doing what we can do and setting a standard, then maybe look towards that standard as part of the standard for the community. So. Are there any other specifics that I may have left out?
I want to point out a couple of things. So you do have a very unique situation, and being located where the Taekwondo place is, they're open at night after you close.
Correct.
So they don't use the parking.
Correct.
During the day. Also, you have taken upon yourself, after our discussion and me learning a lot more about your business that I frequent, and looking at the ordinance, you have taken upon yourself to put an actual portage on out there that you have clean regularly, but you also have access to inside the building.
Right, that is the ordinance. It's 200, I think it was 150 foot, I need to look it up. It was 150 foot, the ordinance in Franklin, to a public restroom that can be used by the employees that are in the food truck. Now, we have a key. He gave me a physical key, the guy that we're renting from, and we're plugged in, we're, we can't move. We are plugged in, paying Middle Tennessee Electric, because the espresso machine takes so much power, first of all, to have a generator to run all the stuff that we're running. So we're paying rent, we're, we have a key to get in the building, even when he's not there, and it's allowed us another thing in order, we can turn on the parking lot lights, because it's dark in the mornings, it's getting to be dark in the evenings, and so we have access to a parking lot that we can utilize, that we're not interfering with other parking. We have a small overlap. And he's generating, we're generating more business for him because we're there during the day when he's not sometimes, and people that stop to ask about his business, we have information that we give out to them as well, and it, you know, it's a Taekwondo and Jiu-Jitsu place, so they can actually take free classes and get in contact with him. So it's actually a benefit to him. And to the portage on, the only reason we do the portage on is because we do a monthly, like event. I set up some tents, and local vendors come in and set up and sell some stuff, and we have live music and all the different things. The only reason we have a portage on is because we don't want to, we can't open the building for somebody that's not vetted, our, our employees. So, and he has actually joined us and done free Taekwondo classes or street, free self-defense classes for women and different things like that, joined us in those things. We are also doing a small business Fairview event in November, which the Arts Council has contacted us and said, we see that y'all are doing it, and we were going to do it, can we join you? And so they have multiple booths. So the community is, we're just opening up the space, we're not, we're just setting up tents so people have a shady spot, and I bought all the tents to set up. And so we're just wanting people that have whatever these goods are that they might want to sell just to help the community. Currently, we did a huge display of, a harvest display with, what are they, pumpkins and all this stuff, right? For people to just take pictures on. A local photographer has, actually has a app that people can scan when they come through to set up times that she comes and takes pictures with them. And it's from a local place, the people that live in this town, that own a fruit stand at the bottom of the, on Highway 100, and they have brought all this stuff, and people are asking to buy our displays, so they've actually set pumpkins there, and people are buying pumpkins, not from us, but through, from them. They just Venmo and buy pumpkins. So we're trying to give back to the community, and I don't know where I was going with all that, but we're giving back to the community is my whole point.
Are there any other questions from the board? Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you.
I have one, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Troy, do you consider yourself, somebody else said that you're, you're not a food truck. Do you consider your business to be a food truck?
I consider, no, I do not. I consider a food truck to be a vehicle that travels around to different locations, events, and different locations throughout the week, throughout the month. We are a drive-through coffee house. So there's two categories, there's brick and mortar, then there's food truck. So it's lumped in, and ice cream truck is mentioned, you know, there's, right? It's still a food truck. But we are a stationary, per design, stationary drive-through coffee house, and the amount of people that come through with kids in car seats that can't get out, coming through a drive-through. The portage on has got a byproduct, is the FedEx drivers and different people that now know it, and, and the employees, like the postal service that comes through, they use this portage on, that we actually get cleaned. It gets cleaned once a week. So it is a benefit for Fairview trash, when they come through and they pick up, they know where some of these spots are, because they're in a vehicle all day, every day, in the community, servicing everybody in here, whether it's meter reading, or gas reading, or picking up their trash, or delivering their mail. And yes, they can probably frequent different places to use a restroom, but knowing where the portage ons are is also something that, that we've seen as an added benefit, and it's in a location that you can't really see it, but anyway, it's a benefit.
Are there any other questions from the board? Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right.
Item 12.
Oh, Mr. Everett from Whiskey Fire.
Hello, my name is Brian Everett, and I'm the owner of Whiskey Fire that is located at 7361 Northwest Highway. And first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for taking the time to hear us tonight. That's very much appreciated. In regards to the newly proposed food truck ordinance, I wasn't aware of the proposed ordinance until yesterday when I read it in the paper, and that, to say the least, has taken me aback a bit. And because I wasn't aware of the first reading of the proposed food truck ordinance, I had to go back and watch the video online of the first vote. It was then that I realized I needed to look into the ordinance fully, so I could fully understand it, and I really needed to share some information with the board about Whiskey Fire, so that the board has a better understanding of where we're coming from and why we're set up the way that we're set up. So first of all, to give you a little bit of background about Whiskey Fire's story, it started in 2019 with a petition and a request from me to rezone my residential property as commercial property, for the purpose of opening a brick and mortar restaurant at that location. That petition and request, while it met the guidelines and also fit into the 2040 plans for Fairview, it was ultimately rejected and voted down by the board at that time. It was that decision that directed and influenced my next move to, to continue to somehow provide income for my family and for myself, and still keep me on that future path to one day hopefully open a brick and mortar restaurant. So I started researching and making calls, and one of those calls was to the city of Fairview in the summer of 2020. My question was regarding food trucks and permits, and if there were any regulations, ordinances, permits, or restrictions regarding the operating of a food truck in Fairview. And the answer at that time was no, there were not. Then I took that information, along with the requirements from the Department of Health in regards to food trucks in Williamson County and the state of Tennessee, and I created a new business model and business plan for Whiskey Fire. Our business model was created, and the business was formed specifically adhering to local, county, and state codes and ordinances in regards to food trucks. I created our current business model specifically and purposefully to have our food truck be stationary on my property, and create a destination spot for Fairview. We invested thousands of dollars in installing dedicated electric service for the truck, installing fencing for safety barriers, and improving the parking area. We have been in business now for two years, and we not only serve the residents and the community of Fairview, but we draw in and attract customers from Dixon, White Bluff, Burns, Kingston Springs, Leapers Fork, Franklin, and beyond. We have had travelers from all over the United States, including Canada, take a five-minute detour from I-40 to stop and eat at Whiskey Fire. Whiskey Fire is heavily invested in serving the community and supporting the community. All of my employees are from Fairview. We purchase our wood supply locally, we shop at Food Saver, Publix, Walmart here in Fairview, we bank locally, and support our local brick and mortar restaurants as well as our food trucks. Now that you know a little bit more about Whiskey Fire and why we are set up the way we are set up, I feel like I need to clarify a few things that were talked about during the first vote, so that you have a better understanding of why this ordinance, as it is currently written, needs to be voted down. While Whiskey Fire is currently operating less than the four days stated in the ordinance, that is primarily due to economic climate and the sheer lack of available staffing needs for our business to operate more than three days. Prior to August of this year, we were actually operating five days per week, and if I had the proper staffing at that point, we may have expanded to the sixth day, but that has not gone that way yet. Financially speaking, only being able to be open for three days is not a actual profitable or sustaining long-term solution for us. There is a certain threshold for every business type that requires a certain amount of sales per week to be able to sustain business, but also to be able to grow your business as well. As a food truck, we don't have the luxury of large amounts of storage space for goods, cooking space, indoor climate-controlled seating, and the comforts of a brick and mortar. A food truck only has the capacity to output a limited number of orders per day, so that we are always and will always be disadvantaged compared to a brick and mortar. For profitability and growth, it really requires five-plus days a week. Anything less is simply trying to maintain and survive and cannot be a long-term solution. For sake of time, I don't want to go through the lengthy 11-page ordinance, but I will note that I have highlighted and notated at least 10 sections of this ordinance that are of concern to Whiskey Fire and myself. Some of the sections are merely vague and just need detailed explanation, while others, while other, several other areas would immediately put Whiskey Fire and other food trucks in violation of the ordinance and left without a food truck permit from the city. Therefore, I ask that either further proper due diligence is done before this ordinance is voted on again, or that you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else to? Is there anyone else to speak?
Mayor, I have a comment.
Okay.
So we get to investigate and research a lot of things in our positions. We, we become subject matter experts in stormwater, in all sorts of things, being a commissioner and sitting on the Board. And, and it's, it's crazy now that we're researching what a food truck is and, you know, what, what all of the regulations are and so forth. And we're also trying to determine what is fair and equitable for all of the business owners in the city of Fairview. So it's, it's interesting, as we do our due diligence and we're talking to the, the food truck vendors, we're talking to our brick and mortar business owners as well, trying to gain as much information as we possibly can to come to that, that fair and equitable place, and, and I, and I hope we can do that for sure. There's a lot of anxiety on this topic. We have people that live here in Fairview that work at the brick and mortar. We've got people that live and work here in the food trucks. And thinking that I'm going to lose my job or I'm going to lose my company, we, we, we understand how significant that is. We also understand that we have to try to block that emotion and find out what is the best circumstance for, for the general public. But it should be up to us to go out and to meet with everyone and to try to become as much of an expert as we possibly can so we know what's at stake. So I personally, I, I thank God that we've got another two weeks to continue to meet with the stakeholders and to truly understand what is at stake, because there's a lot of anxiety with this decision. I, I understand that. That's all I have, Mayor.
I will also say that today I spent some time on the phone with Franklin City about their ordinance, how their stuff works, what they do. They were even kind enough to send me their actual applications for food trucks and for commissaries and for the different sizes and designs of food vendors. So I have that in my office, and I'm in the process of reading through it. But thank you all for coming tonight and trying to inform us of your businesses. Is there anyone else here to speak?
My name is Lori Holden. I'm a brand-new food truck vendor here in Fairview, opening this Saturday. So this is very exciting news. I think, I hope I speak for most of the food truck vendors here, but Hardee's is awesome. Who doesn't love a pork biscuit in the morning, right? And all the restaurants are wonderful, but what about something new, something different, something quality, something boutique, something happy and refreshing? I think a lot of people tend to go to places like Leapers Fork, Franklin, Nashville for experiences, for destinations. We are a destination, the food trucks. I am also stationary. I am not a drive-through. I am not moving around the entire city. It's exciting to be a refreshing place for friendly faces to come and make friends and be a part of the community. I just hope that when you're thinking about this for the next two weeks, you realize that we're trying to bring something special to Fairview, that we're not just, you know, McDonald's. We're not just another Mexican restaurant. If anybody's competing, it may be that. I'm all for Mexican restaurants. It's okay. But I'm just saying, like, consider the fact that we're trying to give Fairview some character that it needs, perhaps.
Thank you. Is there any other? Yes, sir. Are you a food truck owner?
I'm a customer.
Um, I think, I think we're hearing from the owners tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other food truck owners that would like to speak to the Board? Okay. Seeing no one else, we will move on to the next item. Thank you all. Item 12, communications from the Mayor and Commissioners, Commissioner Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everybody for coming out tonight and, and waiting till the end of the agenda with us. But it is great to see all these faces, to hear from the business owners, and I appreciate everybody coming out. That is all, Mayor.
Thank you. The end. That would be the end. Vice Mayor?
It is so good to see all of y'all. This is what it's about, just our community and letting us know how you feel. Like I said, there will be a public hearing where everyone can speak who wants to speak. I thought it would give some background and good information for the owners to be able to let us know how they feel about, you know, their trucks and what they have to offer. I believe it's really good to look at other ordinances in different cities and, you know, kind of see what they're doing, but we're Fairview. And, you know, we're unique, and we have unique desires and unique people, and it's just a good opportunity. Like, I've heard so many people say that we have these different trucks that are destinations. So thank you all for coming out and, you know, letting us hear from you and, and getting a little bit better understanding of, you know, what it means to be your unique business. As I always talk about, you know, we want to keep Fairview beautiful, so let's help clean up and pick up and not throw out, and just have a great night tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Dowson? Mr. Dowson?
Please keep Commissioner Ricky Jones in your thoughts and prayers on the death of his mother. Once again, the anxiety that, that I think everybody is feeling in the business community. Do me a favor. If you get a chance, go around like we are, and I, I think it's great to just have a conversation, to talk through this, to talk through this, this issue with some of the other business owners in the city of Fairview, and to get their perspective. I think communication is the, the best piece and, and the best way to, to understand everybody's perspective, for sure. Thank you so much for coming. I, I wish we had a crowd like this every meeting, but thank you so much.
Mr. Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. Just reiterate what everyone else said. Thank you guys for coming out. If you have a food truck in this town, I can assure you I have been there. If it's food in Fairview, I have been there. My wife can attest to that, probably way more, way more often than I should. But thank you guys for coming out. We, we do appreciate it. And then just in closing, in case the mayor forgot, Tennessee beat Alabama last weekend. And.
The, the mayor has not forgotten, and in fact, I've already, I've already chastised the city attorney for wearing such trash as he's worn here tonight.
Well, we won't sing Rocky Top tonight, but just know I'm, I've been humming it all night.
I would call you out of order.
That's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion from anyone else before I close this meeting? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we're adjourned.